Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Leinell, Chair of the City of Nashville's Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the May 25, 2021 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the Zoning Board, I find that due to-
This meeting is being recorded.
That too. I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and extended by Executive Order 2021-8, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, we are videoconferencing utilizing the Zoom application for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed to the city's website, nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashville's community link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to abutters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. They may contact the Planning Department to arrange alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access or by telephone. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments for future meetings via email to the Planning Department, planning@nashuanh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, P.O. Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Zoning Board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for variances. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances have five points of law to be met that are outlined in the application and summarized in Board motions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases of a quorum of three voting Board members as present this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error? You have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Leinell, I am the Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. We have Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. And we also have the following alternate member in attendance. We have Jay Mancara. Did anybody else join before I? Let's see, no, I guess Jay is it for alternates. Okay. Very good. In addition to Board members, we have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, Zoning Coordinator, and Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll-call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. Jack Courier.
Let me just unmute myself. Jack Courier, I am present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Thank you. J.P. Boucher.
I am present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Rob Shaw.
Rob Shaw is present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Jay Mancara.
I'm present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
And I'm Steve Leinell, and I am present, and there is nobody in the room with me. Alternates may fully participate in discussion, but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance for tonight. In attendance, tonight, we only have four full Board members present. Ms. Mariella McKay was unable to join us, so Mr. Jay Mancara will be voting in all cases unless he recuses himself. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Okay, I will now read the first case into the record. Case number one. Owner is Dennis and Donna Greenwood, address 20 Forest Hills Drive, Sheet B, Lot 348, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, sixty percent proposed to construct a 21-foot round above-ground swimming pool. This is in the R9 Zone, Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Yes, that would be me. My name is Donna Greenwood from 20 Forest Hills Drive.
Okay, you have 15 minutes. Just walk us through your application and what you'd like to do.
Yes, actually, I have it right here on the left. I would like to construct my 21-foot above-ground swimming pool. It would be six feet off the rear and six feet off to the left, which I have an abutting neighbor to the left, and in the back is actually the highway. That would bring me to, I think it's 60% usage instead of the 40% usage. I have spoken to, or most neighbors actually approached me after receiving their information, and none of them had any concerns. It does not make any changes to the residential area. It doesn't make any changes to the value of the property, and it would be something very valued by my family and I.
Okay, that it?
That is it.
All right. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
Um, just, is a highway typically audible? Is it noisy in your backyard? I was just curious if there's a lot of noise from the highway.
Interesting enough, we've only been here actually a year this month, and you actually get used to it, so it's not typical, is that hard? The heaviest time is when I'm usually driving home at the same time that the traffic is out there. You'll hear motorcycles go by pretty loudly on the weekends, but you really do get used to it when you're out there, and I wasn't quite sure I would.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Nothing, no other questions.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other Board members with questions? Is there anybody wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing that either? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, any comments?
I am favorable to the application. I, you know, the house isn't that big, and with the detached garage, it's kind of works against the applicant. If, for example, the garage were attached, it probably wouldn't even need to be before us, so I think the overall use of the lot is not excessive, even though it is at 60%. I also, you know, I have been to a home that abuts the highway, and I found the highway noise to be, you know, loud, but I guess folks get used to it. And the reason I had asked a question was I just thought that having a pool in the backyard would not be any disturbance of the peace and quiet, given that particular neighborhood with the highway in the background. So I have full support of it, that's where I'm at, and that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I support the application as presented by the applicant and agree with what Mr. Courier has stated.
Thank you. Rob, Mr. Shaw.
I likewise am in support, and I, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm also in support, and I think Mr. Courier already laid out the arguments that I think are cogent here, so I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara. You're muted, Jay.
I told myself I wasn't going to do that. I also support the application. You know, it's a reasonable use, and I agree with Mr. Courier's comments.
Thank you. And I, Steve Leinell, also in favor of the application for all the reasons my colleagues have specified. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Donna and Dennis Greenwood, owners of 20 Forest Hills Drive, Sheet B, Lot 348, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-264 to exceed the maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, sixty percent proposed to construct a 21-foot round above-ground swimming pool to the R9 Zone, Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, we agree that this is a reasonable use, and the fact of the matter is that there is a detached garage, and the home is not a lodge home sitting on that lot. So again, as we discussed, that if there had been a detached garage, most likely the applicant wouldn't have needed to come to us for the area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay. Ready for a vote? Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in-
I assume, we didn't hear the last part, he voted in favor? Mr. Shaw, you keep-
I'm voting in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leinell, vote in favor. Congratulations, that's five to nothing. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal should somebody want to request a rehearing.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to case number two. The owner is the Ward Family Living Trust, Chris Ward, addresses 79 West Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 312, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use. Forty percent permitted, 63% proposed to construct a 20-foot by 25-foot above-ground swimming pool with a six-foot deck. This is in the R40 Zone, Ward 5. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Yes, Chris Ward, I'm one of the owners with my wife.
Okay, just give your address for the record, and then just let us know what you'd like to do.
Okay, 79 West Groton Road. So what we are looking to do is put in a above-ground swimming pool. In total, the dimensions is 20 feet by 25 feet. That includes a six-foot deck, which is kind of built in with the pool. It's not a deck that we're building separately. It's part of the pool structure. Located directly behind our house, we're putting it so that it does not go into the setback. We only need the variance because we already have some structures for a hydroponic farm that we have on the west side of the property, which we got, we were in front of the Board a few years ago for that. Overall, I think the lot is large enough that it's not going to, you know, detract or look awkward, even though we're exceeding the 40% limit. I approached my neighbors to the east, they have no problem, and across the street, they have no problem. I also contacted the Groton Woods Condominium Association, contacted the management company, sent over the site plan, offered to go over any questions or concerns, and she's, the management company said they'd talk to the Board, and if there was any concerns, they would get back to me, and I haven't heard anything. So I think, I think that pretty much summarizes it, and I can go into more detail if there's any, anything else you guys want to hear. But everything should be in the application.
Thank you. Any questions from Board members? I'm not seeing anybody with questions. Rob, okay, no, Jay, all right. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing any. Anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, nothing there. And then I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'll start off with saying that I support the application for specifically, again, very large lot. You know, I, you know, we remember having approved the previous use for the hydroponic growing, and even at that time, you know, this was a very large lot. Well, well situated as far as what they had done originally. I don't think this pool will do anything but enhance their use, won't detract from anything else. And again, again, as an example, if all structures on that property were attached, they would be here for the pool variance. So again, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I hope my signal's okay for a little bit here. I also do support the application. I think the most compelling thing is the extremely large lot, and I don't think any of this additional usage will have any negative consequence, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I also support the application. Initially, I was a little concerned at the exceedance, but I really view the hydroponic farm structures as being kind of separate and apart. What is proposed is a pretty customary use for residential lot, and the overall impact, because the lot is so large and the fact that it abuts common land, open space, I think it greatly reduces the impact, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I support the application for the reasons already spoken by my colleagues, and I just also wanted to say that I appreciate the applicant had, how they had reached out to the abutters to hopefully ensure that there were no concerns.
Thank you. And I also support the application for the reasons all mentioned by my colleagues. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I can make a motion to approve the area variance for the Ward Family Living Trust, owners Christopher and Sarah Ward, applicant 79 West Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 312, requesting a variance for land use code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, 63% proposed to construct a 20-by-25-foot above-ground swimming pool with a six-foot deck. It's in the R40 Zone, Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, we find this to be a reasonable use, and as stated by one of the Board members is, the most compelling reason is that it's such a large lot. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values or surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Okay, and I, Mr. Leinell, vote in favor. Congratulations, that's five to nothing. Your variance has been granted. Again, there is a 30-day window of appeal. Please contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, case number three. Owner is Christopher Ledoux, addresses 87 Chestnut Street, Sheet 84, Lot 18, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16B3, Table 16-1, to exceed maximum number of unrelated occupants, four permitted, eight proposed, to live in existing residence as a related family under the federal fair housing laws. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this case?
I'm here, the homeowner, Chris Ledoux.
And I'm also with Michelle Leclerc. I oversee Rise Above.
Okay, please give your address for the record, and then walk us through your application.
My address is 77 Conant Road, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
Both of you the same address?
Yes, I'm sorry, 77 Conant Road, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
Okay, please walk us, walk us through your application.
We also have the owner of Rise Above here, Christopher DiNicolò, address is 2 Clark Road, Nashville, New Hampshire. Do you want to speak first?
No, you can.
So with the, so on the screen, you can see what we're really asking for is the variance of the four unrelated people to exceed that to eight. I do, we have written out the application for you, but with it, we have four bedrooms that are in there, that are in the proposed home, and it would be two people to each bedroom. And with that, I know that there have been, we follow all of NHCore standards, and the NHCore standards, which is the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences, which is the state certifier for sober living homes in the state of New Hampshire. And their, their standards go by 50 square feet per person in a bedroom. They also have a number of other standards where it comes to fire safety, good neighbor policies, parking policies. There's a whole standard book that we have to follow, which also follows the NH, NHCore follows all of the NAR standards, which is the national standards for sober living. So I know they are unrelated residents, but we do, they do socialize as a family, and they do live as a family unit. There are rules and regulations that they have to follow while they're there. So we are looking for that to be changed. I do know, I don't want to get into a bunch of the family definitions. I do see they're up on the screen because we haven't changed a lot of the things with the different cities, but that they are, we do have a number of homes in Nashville. I know I did receive some of the rebuttals, and a couple of them were that about changing the appearance of the house, which I don't think is an issue. We're not changing that. We have bought four homes in Nashville, and every one of those homes, which we had appraised last November after doing work to them, have all been appraised at $100,000 to $130,000 more than what we bought them for. So it is something that we're willing to go in and do work to and keep the home up and keep it going as it is. Some evidence-based standards is the Oxford House and some different things, which I know I put in the application, where recovery residents work better with a number of people there, because when people are first getting clean and sober, it's pair-run, it's peer-related, it's how that, it's how people, if they're having an issue, somebody else in the home understands the issue. So that's why we're asking for the variance.
I'm Chris Ledoux again, I'm the owner of the home. I'm just gonna kind of speak about like why I'm doing this. I'm a product of Rise Above Sober Living. You know, I'm coming up on four years clean in July, and one of the things that I really wanted to do, especially in the city of Nashville, I'm born, raised, I've always lived here, went to Nashville North. My parents still live here, like, this is my city. And for years, like, I didn't treat it like my city, I didn't have respect for it. So to be able to give back is something I've always wanted to do. And, you know, one of the first things I did besides save money and do all these things as a normal adult would do is, you know, I purchased my first home in hopes to turn into a male-sober-living, you know, house that I could manage so I could give back to the, you know, the community that I once kind of took from for so long. You know, I read some of the letters too about parking and all these things, which are, which are great concerns, but like the lot that my house is on is very large, big garage. You know, it, like Michelle was saying, when she was talking about the houses that, you know, Rise Above does own in the Nashville area, in surrounding areas, that we go into an area, especially like you live down to the tree streets, a lot of the houses are run down. Luckily, the house where I bought mine is next to people who actually care about, you know, their parents at their house, the neighborhood. Right away, I, one of the neighbors come up to me, introduced himself and say how excited he was, like, we go into areas and try to vamp up the house, make everything look better, give back to the community. You know, so like I said, this is why I'm doing it. And luckily, I have Michelle to like take care of all the numbers and emails back and forth, because I'm not good at that stuff, you know? But I'm gonna let Chris say something.
I know it showed on time, so I'll speak quickly as far as Chris and Michelle, what they said. So I'm one of the owners and the co-founders of Rise Above. We've been in Nashville for the past six years, and this, this is familiar resistance that we seem to run into often because there is a misunderstanding of like who we are and the actual running of the housing and the family dynamic. I understand the stigma and the perception of, of, oh, it's an addict or a recovery home and stuff like that, but what people fail to realize is all these houses that we bought, we clear out a lot of trash and drugs and all this stuff. When we go in there and we completely renovate, and we're presenting to a neighborhood a fully renovated house that is not going to be managed and maintained to make sure there is no drug and/or alcohol use within them. We're all byproducts of sober living. I have 17 years in recovery. Michelle's an alumni of Rise Above, Chris is an alumni of Rise Above, and we've been here for six years, and you've never read about us in the paper or anything bad. All we've done to Nashville is contribute. We started a recovery-based barbershop called Rise Barbershop, revived the Resource Center on Main Street. We have two treatments in it, two treatment centers in sober living, and we've just tried to give back. We work in conjunction with the courthouses, the state, whoever wants to work in conjunction with us, it's already a hard enough area to work with. But we can almost guarantee, like, as neighbors, like, we've always built great relationships with our neighbors, our neighborhoods. We like to maintain, keep the properties clean. If there is drug use, that person is asked to leave. So it's like a house in the neighborhood with guys that, that, I think people get confused when they think of drug addicts, because we've had firefighters in our housing, we've had lawyers in our housing, we've had mothers that have children. It's about building that connection in early recovery to have a safe support system so you could transition back to your home life. And, and I get that the idea or the misconception of what people perceive it as, but I mean, you're speaking to three drug addicts right now that have turned their lives around completely. you're speaking to three drug addicts right now that have turned their lives around completely and that own real estate in Nashville and that are improving in the community. Michelle paroled to us five years ago and she's also bought two houses and completely changed her life and has a daughter back in her life. My story as well, and so has Chris. And it's because of these family dynamic atmospheres that are few and far between. When we first came to Nashville, there was zero, there were zero recovery homes. And now we're the largest operation in New Hampshire. And so we want to work in conjunction with the city. We want to work in conjunction with whoever wants to work in conjunction with us. And we want to continue to grow and give back to the community. And I know I've taken up a lot of time. Prior to us coming here, we originally got the opportunity because we had slum lords that allowed us to rent from them, that didn't maintain the properties. So we wasted a lot of money in the first few years renovating houses that we didn't own. And now the last two years, three years, we've had the opportunity to acquire properties on our own and bring them up to the standard of living that we're proud of. And we have pictures of our properties, we have renovations, we brought appraisals. Because, I mean, you can ask any of the representatives from NH Core that walked through our homes, we do a really good job because we want to be proud of the places that people come to and live in. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
You have any further comments? You still have a little less than seven minutes, if you wish.
There was a representative of NH Core that was on, Kim Bach is also on the Zoom call with us. And she has, I mean, she could give you some feedback on the housing because she has walked all of our houses. At least she was, at least she was there earlier.
I see that you are there. Ms. Bach, if you wish to speak, give your name and address for the record and you can continue for about another six minutes.
My name is Kim Bach. I'm the executive director with the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences. My address, my home address is one thirty-eight Town Farm Road, New Boston, New Hampshire. What I would like to say is Rise Above is correct. I will tell you their houses are run incredibly well and they substantially improve the quality of the property that they purchase when they make renovations. With respect to the variance, the people inside, living in a recovery home, live as a family unit. They share two people to a bedroom. And then they share all the common area. They eat meals together. They socialize in the living room together. They have family gatherings together. Part of the requirements for recovery is to be actively engaged during the day in productive measures. So they are required to either be employed, to be searching for employment or education to further their employment, or to be engaged in volunteer work. They're not allowed to hang around the house. We have standards about good neighbor policy, about noise levels, about parking policies. There's adequate parking here. I think there's eight spaces on this particular piece of property. So eight residents won't take up any street parking at all. We have safety standards that are much more rigorous than is typical in a normal household. So they have to have fire extinguishers that are functional. They have to have smoke detectors that are functional. And we have quite a long list. There are thirty-six standards that the recovery house needs to meet. It needs to be run ethically and safely. So I'm here if you have any direct questions. I think Michelle covered a lot of things in our application. But basically in support of the idea that the eight people that would live here would function as any other family of eight that are related.
Great, thank you. I see somebody named facilitator has their hand up. Who are you, sir?
Hi. Can you see me?
See and hear you. Are you, are you part of the applicant's team?
I am, I am actually. So my name's Justin Etting. I'm one of the co-owners of Rise Above. I just wasn't sitting in the office with them. So I just want to speak to our application also real quick.
Okay, give your address for the record, please.
Sure, it's one oh seven Barbara Lane, Hudson, New Hampshire.
Okay, you have about four minutes.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for your time. So yeah, I just wanted to reconfirm that, you know, we've been, we've been a longstanding member of the Nashville community, working with the Nashville community. We worked with Town Hall, we worked with the Health Department, we worked with the mayor closely to open organizations. We have a nonprofit that we run. We also have two treatment centers. And we take the greatest pride in maintaining the properties and making sure that our residents are respectful of the community. And any resident that wouldn't be respectful of the community would not be allowed to stay there. We have a policy that nobody is allowed to live there that doesn't have a minimum of thirty days sober, which is more than most recovery residences. Like, you know, like everybody else said, I'm twenty-three years into recovery. I worked for a private equity firm for twelve years. You know, I came into this business because I deeply believe in people getting better and that is solely what we're invested in. And so I completely understand neighbors' initial fears and concerns of a sober house being in a neighborhood. But I also have to speak to, we have owned and operated homes in Nashua and we have not had a complaint in, you know, six, almost seven years. We're coming up on seven years here of operating our business. And it is of our utmost concern to be respectful to everybody in the neighborhood and to improve the community, improve the neighborhood, work in conjunction with the people that we're around. And so I completely understand if anybody has initial resistance, but I do want to, you know, reconfirm that the people that are in the sober living are not who you think they are. You know what I mean? It's like we have people who are managers at Oracle, we have people that are firefighters. And yes, we have people getting back on their feet, but what we're teaching them is healthy, happy living. And if they're not willing to like, to meet those standards, then they're not allowed to stay. So there is no, so anybody that has any concerns of like it being riffraff or a nuisance to the neighborhood, I can assure you that that is the last thing that we would ever want. And we, we take great pride in trying to, you know, work in conjunction with the neighbors, the community, and, you know, and improve people's lives. The truth is, is that amazing people are coming through our homes and changing their lives. And it's a very important, you know, we're living through an epidemic here and it's very important that people get the care that they need. But also, you know, we need to be respectful. There are, you know, there is a stigma around recovery houses at times. And there used to be, you know, recovery houses that weren't run properly and could almost, you know, devalue the neighborhood. But that, we have not seen that be the case. We literally, all of our homes have increased in value. I know that was one of the main concerns and I understand that concern. But I can assure you, after we're done renovating the property, it will be worth considerably more money. We invest tens of thousands of dollars into these homes to make sure that, you know, the people that live in them feel like they're loved and cared about and respected. And they will respect the home and the neighborhood. So I greatly appreciate your time and thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Okay, I gather, we'll get to you, Mr. Boucher. That's done with the applicant. I did, I wanted to get a question in first. The application mentions under the Fair Housing Act laws, could you, could one of you please just outline how the Fair Housing Act applies here for the education of the audience? And I've done some research, but maybe you could help us understand.
Oh, I can speak to that. So the Fair Housing Act speaks to persons with disabilities, which people with addiction are considered a person with disability, that they have the right to be, to conjugate as a family and live as a family under one single roof. So it creates the protection that you cannot discriminate against people with disabilities. And under the Fair Housing Act, people who suffer from addiction are protected under this act as a, and so there's two laws actually. There's a Fair Housing Act and then there's the disability. I gotta, I gotta get to other law, but there's two laws that work in conjunction. And so, and so what they do is they, they create protections for people to be able to live together who need extra assistance in their living, which, which, okay, there we go. Which this use would be considered, and this has been, this has been fought in the court of law many times. And it's been won almost every time, to be honest. Every time that it's been contested in court under this regulation, the plaintiff who's fighting for the Fair Housing Act, if they were not allowed to live as a community, has won. So that's, that's the general briefing of the Fair Housing Act. I don't know if anybody else has any input.
Well, I think that's good. Mr. Boucher, you had a question?
Yes, are you all set, mister? Are you all set? What are your questions, Mr. Lionel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious if somebody could answer, just for my understanding and for the people who are probably listening in, who may be affected or live in that area. What's typically would be the supervision of the site? I mean to say is, are they living completely solely on their own or is there somebody that comes in occasionally to work with those, those people in recovery? And also speak to what the neighborhood could expect as, what you allow, what's allowed for visitation. So basically I'm looking at, you know, how, what would be the activity at that home? What could people expect to see? Besides the folks that are, that would be living there.
So, Michelle, I can answer that. So there's a house manager that lives in every one of our houses that is on-site. They do have full-time jobs, but they are there every night. There is a curfew of eleven o'clock every night, so all of the residents are to be in their house by eleven. They are allowed to stay out a little later on the weekends, but they are all to be in. Nightly, they are breathalyzed and they are randomly drug tested throughout the week. On top of the fact that there's a house manager that lives there, we have somebody that oversees. We have three people. We have two males and a female, so we have both male-run and female-run houses that oversee those houses, that oversee the house managers to make sure that the houses are staying clean. They're being breathalyzed, they're being drug tested. And then above that is me, who oversees all of the houses and then Justin and Chris. We go in and out of the houses on a regular basis. As far as visitors, that like, they are all productive citizens. So they're all working during the day. Some may work at night. They work in restaurants, they work in regular, whatever job it is they're doing. So there will probably never be all eight of them home at the same time due to work schedules. They are allowed to have, we're big on reunification with children. We work with DCYF, so they are allowed to have their children at the homes. They're only allowed to have a sleepover a night at the house, whether that's their child or what it is. And they're allowed to have two sleepouts a week. So we also monitor that too, where they're allowed to leave the property. But there is somebody that lives there on a full-time basis.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara? You're muted, Jay.
I'm muted. So I'm having trouble understanding the application. The applicant stated that there'll be four bedrooms, two people to a bedroom. When I look in the application package, there is an email from Marshall Wilkins to the applicant stating that they have four bedrooms, they're proposing three for a total of seven bedrooms. I then see a floor plan in the application package that shows one floor with four bedrooms and a bathroom and another floor with three bedrooms, a kitchen, and what appears to be a dining area and another bathroom. So help me understand, what is this house actually going to contain? Is it one floor? Is it two? Is it four bedrooms? Is it seven? Is there a living room? Is there a kitchen? What's actually being proposed?
So I apologize because we had put a permit into the permit department to add those bedrooms. So that some of those, if you look at the square footage, will be single bedrooms. So some will be, have a single room, some will have a double room. It will totally hold eight individuals. The permit hadn't gone through when I put the variance in. It has passed now, the permit department. So we were going to have to not be able to build those bedrooms originally. So the permit got passed and now they said we had to come to zone in for the ordinance of, because of the square footage that you were saying that only four unrelated individuals could live there. So I do apologize for the confusion on that.
So I'm still trying to understand, what's going to be in the house? Are there four bedrooms or seven?
Seven bedrooms. Wait, let me count them. There'll be one, two, three downstairs. And three, there'll be six bedrooms, right? One, two, three, four, five, six bedrooms. Three of them are, two of them are doubles and four of them are singles. So it'll be a total of eight people.
And so are, am I right in that there's two bathrooms? There is a kitchen? Is there a living room?
Kitchen, there's a living room, there's two bathrooms.
So on the plan that I see that says that there's going to be four bathrooms on the second floor, there's only going to be three. And that fourth room is going to be some other purpose, used for another purpose?
Yes. So bedroom, bedroom, bedroom. That's, that's upstairs on the second floor, that's not a bedroom. That's an open area. That, I don't know why that's on that.
Okay, so that's, that's a common area. So there'll be two stories, there'll be six bedrooms, two bathrooms, an open area on the second floor, and then a kitchen, dining, kind of shared area on the first floor. And the total is still fourteen hundred square feet.
Yes, because it wasn't, nothing got added as square footage.
Okay, and can I just ask, and there's an existing garage?
There is an existing garage, which eventually we'll want to redo. But we're doing one thing at a time, coming to, coming to the permit department with one thing at a time, coming to you with one thing at a time. We did ask the permit department about changing the use of the garage and doing all of those. We have asked that. But that is structural engineering. That is way more than we were ready. So really what we would like is this ordinance to be passed to get eight individuals into the home. And then down the line, at some point, with structural engineering and all of that, we would want to take that garage down. Because we agree with the neighborhood and like, we're not disagreeing that that is an eyesore.
Got it. Thank you.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Courier?
Just wondering, how many, you mentioned you operate other properties in this fashion and that. How many other properties are you own and operate?
We own and operate three, six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve at the moment.
So that's
are in the city of Nashville and one is in Hudson.
So I'm sorry, was that eleven then you have in Nashua?
We do.
And have there been variances or a need for variances as you're requesting tonight on any of those eleven?
No, because a lot of them are multiple family units. Even though we have the whole building, there hasn't needed to be a variance because it's structured by apartments.
Okay. And then on your application, there was just a, this sentence kind of catches me. It says, "A busy, active family builds capital much faster than a small family unit." I just, what were you meaning by the word capital? Just a busy, active family unit builds capital much faster than a small family unit?
Recovery capital, where if there's, recovery is based on connection, recovery is based on community. So the people, when there, when there is only, if there's only four people and in a home or like two or three people in a home, they don't build the community, they don't build the connections together as quickly because there's not as much togetherness really. They isolate more. We don't like to have a bunch of single bedrooms because of the isolation factor, which is not good for recovery. Normally the people that are in singles are our house managers and people that have been there for a while. So that's what I mean by capital. It's the connection of the recovery sense.
And another question is, like you've mentioned that you control the noise levels. Could you provide me, like what is, how is that controlled? What is, what's the language on that?
With the house manager that lives in the home. With the house manager that lives in the home. So the house manager is responsible for when the people are in the home, when, at night. We have, we have a good neighbor policy that we had to have approved through NH4 in regards to noise levels and such. We have not had any complaints in the six years we've been, almost seven years we've been doing it, in regards to one of our homes when it comes to noise.
Okay. And then the other question, there was, in the application, I, I think it mentioned that there was like no smoking in the house?
There is no smoking in the house. That is also one of the certification standards. It has to be 10 feet away from the home if we are going to, we put out smoking receptacles. So it has to be at least 10 feet away from the home.
Well, the, the reason that caught my attention is there was a recovery home, like, next to my house for, for some years. And, and I'm wondering if maybe the same policy was in effect because what had happened was the residents would step off the property, you know, regularly. They smoke regularly, and, you know, to smoke and socialize. And it became, that situation became burdensome for the neighbors and such, like myself, because we were right next door, so folks were, you know, in, in, smoking in front of our home, well, you know, frequently. Could that same thing happen here?
I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you it couldn't happen here, but with the way this property is set up, there's at least 10 feet in the parking lot. That, so we would put a smoking receptacle on our own property.
Okay.
Let me just speak to that. To be honest, if that was happening, we would fix it. There's no way we're gonna let people just be standing in front of other people's houses and smoking. That's obviously disruptive to the neighborhood, and it would be addressed immediately, just, just to be clear. That, we wouldn't allow that. Normally, we have smoking areas on our property. So there, there, there normally, we normally put them in the back of the building away, like, so that we're not conjugating on the street. And we normally designate an area for smoking for people. But again, even when addressing noise concerns, that's also addressed in that you have to be respectful of the neighborhood, and you can't be just out there being loud and talking too loud and socializing. The truth is, is that most residents, there, there's also more structure where they're required to go to meetings every night, where they do socialize with other people. So when they get home, they are expected to respect the area, respect the community, not be outside making a lot of noise. All of these are written into our policies. So i- if that was happening on our property, it would be addressed. There's no way we would allow that to continue. Just to be clear.
All right, thanks. And then a, a final question. This, the variance you're requesting, like, when did this come to light? Was this something like, that you were aware of, you know, like, when you were searching for the next home? Had you been confronted with this requirement of, you know, the maximum number per square foot? I guess I'll just say it like that before. When did this come to light? Was it this property or other properties prior to this?
It was this property. This is the first time it's come to light. We've always followed the NH4 standards, which, like I said, are 50 square feet per resident in a bedroom. So we've always, when we've looked at, when we've looked at properties, have always been going by that. Because that's what we need for certification purposes, so we didn't, this is the first time it's come to light for us.
Okay, thank you.
Other board members with questions? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody at this meeting who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on the call with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Mr. Fock, you have a?
Sure.
I know, we, we received some letters. I'll, I'll read them.
That's, I was gonna mention the letters.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nobody on the call, I'm, we received three, three letters, and I will read them into the record. First one is from Ramon de Leon, 84 Chestnut Street. He writes, "I am not in agreement with having the owner of 87 Chestnut Street to exceed maximum number of unrelated occupants. The reason I am not in agreement is because at this current, we have a homeless shelter next to our home, as well as down a couple of houses, there is a halfway house. I also feel like it would overpopulate the areas as this areas has been a quiet area with elder around. There is also an elderly facility and church in front side of the 87 Chestnut Street home." Okay, let's see, first, that's, that's that one. Then we have one from Glenn and Monica Lyon at 33 Kinsley Street. "We have owned 31 to 33 Kinsley Street since 1986 and moved into the building in 1998. The property, 87 Chestnut Street, was originally built as a carriage house for our property in the late 1800s. As far as we know, it was never a residence until June 2007, when two owners back came before this board to request a variance to convert it to a two-family and continue using the garage for their business. At that time, the board denied their request for the two-family, but allowed the continued use for their business as grandfathered. They renovated it as a single-family home. In the summer of 2019, they sold to a family and the business use of the garage was discontinued. The house was listed for sale this past winter as a single-family when Mr. Ladoo purchased it, purchased it. As a butters, we strongly object to this variance. A rooming house would greatly alter the existing character of the neighborhood. We have several owner-occupied homes within the area, and we feel that this use will adversely affect our property values and our ability to rent. We do not feel this is a reasonable use of this property. We also object because of the increase in density and related parking issues. The neighborhood already has several buildings with no driveways or parking for just one car. There are many more cars than on-street spaces can accommodate. We realize this building has a parking lot that could handle maybe eight cars, but not also accommodate visitors in snow storage, let alone any green space. We are also concerned about the condition of the building and its owner's ability to address its deficiencies. This building has been the eyesore of the neighborhood for over 20 years. The three previous owners have all promised to improve its appearance to no avail. We have no confidence that Mr. Ladoo will do what's necessary to bring the building up to the level of the rest of the neighborhood. The fact that he purchased the single-family home, knowing that it was zoned RC, with the sole intention of changing its use and proceeding with renovations before obtaining either this variance or permits, does not inspire confidence. We wanted to thank this board for your consideration of our concerns and objections, Glenn and Monica Lyon." And last, we have, this is from Charles Boilard, 35 Kinsley Street. "I sincerely hope that the variance is be denied on the grounds of overcrowding a small area between said property and my property. Being a retiree with a disabled partner, all we've requested is peace and quiet and a safe place to reside. We believe that this change in occupancy will certainly detract from our quality of life. Thank you for hearing our grievances." Okay, so those are the three, I think, of all the three letters that we received. Let me get this right.
That's correct.
Yep, okay, thank you, Ms. Courier. All right. So the applicant has five minutes to respond to the comments made by the letter writers.
Um, Michelle, do you want me or Chris to respond?
You, your choice is to, to, who would respond?
In regards to the letter from, we'll start with a letter from Glenn and Monica Lyon. I do believe one of their, I mean, one of their things is the eyesore, which I, I do, we agree with that. We're not saying it's not. But like I had sta, like we had stated before, we have bought four of the properties in the city of Nashua, which we have gone in, refurbished, redone, both inside and outside of the buildings, fixed the properties, and they're both assessed at $125,000 more than what we purchased them for. So we have, we do have the ability to put the money into it so that we can, you know, with their concerns, and also with their parking, there is, we will never change the parking lot because we do know that Chestnut Street has very few street spaces. So there are going to be eight people, not all eight people will even have a car. Most people going into our residencies, our residents, don't have the ability to have a car at the beginning for their, for their own purposes. As far as the one from Ramon de Lyon about the homeless, the homeless shelter next to his home and all of that, it is not going to be people that are living as like a homeless shelter that are going to be in and out or be standing on the streets. We do follow rules and regulations. They do have rules that they have to abide by. And if there is an issue, like I said, it goes to the house manager. If, for some reason, the house manager can't squash that concern, then it goes to the person overseeing it. It'll go to me. We do have a hierarchy on how to handle concerns when it comes to that. And then on the third letter, the eight proposed to live about the overcrowding of the small area between the said properties, and like, the peace and quiet, there is, there will be peace and quiet because, again, we would go over and, and deal with that. We haven't had any issues or any complaints in regards to any of house, the houses that we run. And we do take a lot of pride in the fact that there hasn't been any complaints on the houses we run. You know, and, and it, and we, we put the work in to make sure that there aren't. Oh, Kate's telling me I'm at three minutes.
Yeah, no, I think, Michelle, this is Chris, the homeowner, hit the nail on the head about e- everything. You know, we understand the neighbors' concerns, we understand especially the elderly woman that wrote in, you know, about noise complaints, and these are all, all concerns that we take into consideration. And that's why those rules that we follow, managers have to follow. You know, with the parking too. The, the property is huge. So I think Michelle covered it really well, so.
Ms. Bach, you, you want to add a, a comment for, you have about two minutes left?
What's also important to know is that all of the Rise Above Houses are certified by my organization, by the New Hampshire Coalition of Recovery Residences. And we run a formal complaint process. So if a neighbor has a concern about a house, they, they can contact me directly, and I will be following up on anything that looks like an infraction of our standards for certification. So if there's a noise, noise issue, I'm gonna go back and talk to Michelle and ask her what's going on in the house. If, if there are other rules, if there are safety issues, that can come to New Hampshire Corps.
Okay. You have about a minute and a half left. If you wish to say anything else, otherwise you can just end it right there. Anything more? No, okay. And since there's nobody present at this meeting who raised objection, then we won't have the final rebuttal of the objectors. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Let's see. Mr. Shaw, your comments? You're, yeah.
Yeah, this is the whole problem. I'm actually, I think mostly in support of this application. I think the, the, the way the organization is run, all the safeguards and everything that are in place, I think actually lead to what certainly, to me, seems like a much more assured good neighbor than if it were just perhaps a standard, standard rental property. So I also do think there are a lot of stigmas with these kind of things, but the, the residents here we're talking about are ones that have already completed recovery programs and are already well on their way to definitely being good citizens and contributing back to the community. So I think, I, I, I think there's, you know, plenty of things that the organization is already going to ensure happens. I think other aspects of the property itself, as far as things like parking and whatnot, are, are, you know, quite, quite well in place. And so I generally am in support. Certainly curious what the rest of my board members have to say here. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. McCarran?
I, I, I struggled with this one for a while, but, you know, I, I do support the application for, for a couple of reasons. My, my struggle was with the, you know, really the, the density of occupation and the number of, you know, adults living in one single-family, pretty small, single-family home. Where, you know, I, I come around is that, first of all, the property itself is rather unusual. This was a commercial property. The intensity of use was different, it, it certainly, at least at one point. The building itself is unusual, the lot does have a significant amount of parking. And, you know, the other, you know, aspect of it, I think that saves it, if you will, is that there do appear to be very significant onsite and institutional structural measures in place to help control the potential adverse impacts of, you know, that large number of people living on this property. There is a very significant amount of oversight from what I under, you know, from what I'm hearing, both at the state level, at the organizational level, and actually on the premises. So for those reasons, I, I can support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I, I want to start off by saying I certainly appreciate the work that NH4 does and, you know, the attention, you know, that is, is apparent, you know, goes into these houses. It's impressive that there's so many in operation by Michelle and the other owners there. It's a needed thing for the, needed situation for the city of Nashua. I, I'm struggling a bit with, you know, connecting the dots of, of the density on the house size. I remember this property from when it was before the board before, and, and it was certainly a low-key, you know, commercial business. I think they were just redoing some bus seats. And even the, the neighbors were testifying that, you know, the, the business was very low-key. So just wanted to throw that out as a backdrop, but, um, I, I, you know, for, to, to grant a variance in perpetuity for what I'm seeing was perhaps an inadvertent oversight of pursuing a property. You know, I, I think it was, property was pursued and purchased, and then this realization came up. Is that a, is that a, a need, a hardship on the property for, to grant a variance? I, I struggle with that. Although I appreciate the work they do, so that's where I'm at at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the variance, and, and I think my fellow board members have pretty much described everything I would have, have agreed to. So I'll stay on in support of the application.
Thank you. I, I want to quote from part of the Fair Housing Act, which I, I put a link to in the, in the chat window. And this is in a section regarding to discrimination in housing based on, upon disability group homes. And the third bullet here is, "To refuse to make reasonable accommodations in land use and zoning policies and procedures where such accommodations may be necessary to afford persons or groups of persons with disabilities an equal opportunity to use and enjoy housing. What constitutes a reasonable accommodation is a case-by-case determination. Not all requested modifications of rules or policies are reasonable. If a requested modification imposes an undue financial or administrative burden on a local government, or if a modification creates a fundamental alteration in a local government's land use and zoning scheme, it is not a reasonable accommodation." I do not find that this application is unreasonable. And the Fair Housing Act pretty much encourages zoning boards to allow reasonable accommodations for group housing. And as, as been said earlier, the recovery housing is, is considered under disabled housing for congregate living. So I am in support of this application. Would somebody care to make a motion? I'll do it. Give me a moment to get the right words here. Okay, here we are. "Like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Christopher Ladoo, addresses 87 Chestnut Street, sheet 84, lot 18, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16B3, table 16-1, to exceed maximum number of unrelated occupants for permitted eight per table sixteen dash one, to exceed maximum number of unrelated occupants for permitted, eight proposed to live in on existing residence as a related family under the federal fair housing laws. This is in the RC zone, word four. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Um, it's a single, uh, single family house with apartments being built and, uh, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will, uh, we have testimony that it will, uh, improve the, uh, property values of both this house and surrounding parcels. Uh, the board believes it is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this area variance. Do I have a second? I saw Jay's hand up first. Okay. Uh, let's see. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's four to one. Uh, congratulations. Your variance has passed. Uh, please be aware, there is a thirty day window of appeal. Um, please talk to Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to case number four.
Mr. Lionel?
Yes.
Would you mind if we took a five minute, uh, break?
I, I do not mind at all. Uh, eh, how about, can we make it ten minutes? I need to feed the cats.
I'll take ten.
Okay, ten minutes. So we'll, we'll come back at, uh, seven fifty-three.
Thank you.
Okay, it's seven fifty-three and we will resume. Case number four. Owner Christina Pinella and Chris Sockel, address sixty-one Concord Street. Sheet forty-seven, lot seventeen. Requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash one ninety-two, section C, to encroach seven feet into the twenty-five foot required front yard setback on Cortland Street to remove existing driveway curb cuts on Concord Street and Cortland Street and construct a new driveway curb cut and driveway with access off of Cortland Street. This is in the RA zone, word three. Uh, I see Ms. Pinella is here, uh, or both of you are here. So, uh, please walk us through your application.
Yeah. Can you put that up on screen or? Kate?
Mr. King, are you going to be presenting the application?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, please give your name and address for the record.
Randy King, seventy Proctor Road, Wilton, New Hampshire.
Okay, you have fifteen minutes.
Okay, so, um, the main goal was is, if you know this property, it's a unique piece of property. Um, the driveway that went out on Cortland Street was in excess of a twelve, probably a fourteen percent grade, which was very dangerous, um, going out in the wintertime. The driveway out to Concord Street is right next to a telephone pole and Cortland Street. So again, it was a very dangerous driveway to go in and out of, no matter which way you're coming from. If you use your directional, go in the driveway, people ultimately think you're going onto Cortland Street and cut in front of you. It was just a very dangerous spot. So we worked with Mark Jennings, the city engineer, to come up with this driveway plan that comes out on Cortland Street. It's fifty feet away from the, uh, telephone pole. We do want to omit the old Cortland Street driveway and the Concord Street driveway. Um, the grade is the eight percent. We stayed, we were able to stay at the eight percent grade with the new proposed driveway. Um, currently, we've got our application right at the end of November, so there is a base code that's on the driveway as per plan that you see it now. Um, the, the challenge, one of the challenges was there's a four and a half foot difference in grade from the sidewalk to the top of the driveway. So we had to fill in a little bit where the old Cortland Street driveway came out just to make it safe for the, uh, resident to back out of the drive, out of the garage. So that's basically it in a nutshell. Um, we are going to omit the Concord Street. We, we're actually adding green space. Um, so I think it's a, 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 a pretty good proposal.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, questions from the board? Not seeing any. Um, is there anybody, uh, on the call who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Uh, not seeing anybody. We did get a letter. Uh, this is from Loretta Hubley at twenty-two Berkeley Street. The applicants have in writing, have in writing tied to their requested variance, a beautification by plantings of the remaining curved hill to the sidewalk. I'm writing because the experience of myself and other neighbors leads me to ask that the variance be tied not just to the original planting of decorative plants, but also to their maintenance. Since arrival, the applicants have shown themselves to be unaware of the needs of plants and greenery. Four out of five trees that they have planted near Cortland Street have died from lack of water. One of these is trying to make a comeback, but is being choked by weeds, some a foot tall. Professional help may be necessary for them to maintain any promised plantings. So far, the applicants have not shown concern for the maintenance of the Cortland Street side of their property. Large blocks of stone and orange plastic fencing are in a heap. Neighbors had to re- refrain a plastic shield from blowing to the Cortland Street traffic. Perhaps the curve of the land prevents the home occupants from seeing that curve of the hill from their windows. The parties requesting this variance have need of the driveway as planned and already built with blacktop. They have also built a large turnaround with blacktop before asking for this variance. It is my opinion that some kind of turnaround is necessary because of the danger and backing up to a point on Cortland Street where traffic accumulates, especially in rush hour. As far as sliding into traffic, no owner in the past thirty years has done so, but the level of the top of the hill was raised about a foot when building upon it. Again, this is from Loretta Hubley, twenty-two Berkeley Street in Nashua. Um, I will comment that the zoning board does not get into, uh, maintenance of landscaping of plants and things like that. Um, Mr. King, uh, or, or perhaps the applicants, they have, uh, five minutes to respond to uh, Ms. Hubley's, uh, letter if you wish.
Uh, this is Christina Pinella at sixty-one Concord Street, Nashua. Um, I will, uh, respond to, uh, Ms. Hubley's concerns. Uh, you know, recognizing that the yard was, uh, not in any kind of pristine fashion while we were doing the garage renovation and the excavation in the yard. We did remove and move some plants, like you, like the committee says, you're not actually looking at the landscaping. And, you know, given the fact that we are, um, making some, um, sessions with closing, we had a two, uh, entry and exit driveway and making a concession down to one for the safety of the neighborhood. Um, and ourselves, you know, we think that once we have this, um, driveway complete, we actually have landscaping plans to protect the hill, to replace the plantings, but we are unwilling to do that until the driveway is settled. Um, in addition, you know, as Randy pointed out, uh, granting the driveway variance will allow us to have seventy-five feet of uninterrupted green space along Concord. Um, as well as additional green space around Cortland, leaving that, uh, corner, which is a, a two-way stop with, uh, the Concord traffic, uh, unencumbered by another driveway entrance or exit in the visibility, uh, for pedestrians, uh, and cars improved. So thank you for the members of the committee for listening.
Okay, and since there was, uh, nobody on the call that, uh, had questions or concerns, um, then I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. So, Mr. Mancara, your comments?
Uh, I, I support the application. I think this creates a, a, a much safer condition. Uh, I think it actually reduces impacts, uh, to surrounding neighbors. And so, uh, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I support the application. I really, it's, I think it speaks for itself. I think overall it's an improvement, uh, one what appears to me as well to be a better placed driveway than the two existing driveways. And I feel that when the project's wrapped up, it'll look much better than it did before it got started. So I think, uh, I'm, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
So support the application. And, and again, I believe that's going to be, uh, a net benefit to the the applicants and the neighborhoods. So, um, again, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I likewise support the application. I don't really have anything else to add other than what my colleagues have already said.
Okay, and, uh, I am Mr. Lionel, also support the application. Uh, I agree that, um, this is a, a better solution than what's there now. Um, that the, uh, incursion on the frontage is, uh, setback is minimal. And, um, and this will be a, a safer thing all around. Uh, so. Anybody care to make a motion, please? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I can make a motion to approve the area of variance for Christina Pinella and Chris Sockel, owners of owners Randy E. King, senior applicant, sixty-one Concord Street, sheet boy, seven lot seventeen, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety dash one nine two C to encroach seven feet into the twenty-five foot required front yard setback on Cortland Street to remove an existing driveway curb cuts on Concord Street and Cortland Street and to construct a new driveway curb cut and driveway with access off of Cortland Street. It's in the RA zone, uh, word nine. Uh, it's in the RA zone. I already spoke to that. Um, the variance is needed to, to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than, than the variance. Eh, again, um, this property is a corner lot and, and it has obviously two, uh, frontages. Um, again, um, even though we are, um, we are, uh, in support of this application, we are removing uh, what we believe is to be, uh, something that's not desirable, or it could be a safety issue by removing the driveway off of Co- Co- uh, Concord Street and, uh, removing the, the second driveway entrance and consolidating everything to one driveway. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest and that, and substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor. Congratulations. It's five to nothing. Your variance is approved. Uh, please be aware, there is a thirty day window of appeal. Um, please, uh, talk to Mr. Falk if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, we do have a rehearing request. Uh, this was a case, uh, uh, the owner Vivian Adams, uh, and the requister of the rehearing is Michael and Courtney Duran, Robert J. Corsetti and Harley Hart, Borissey and Anna S. Lamshu, James and Mary Ann Orient, all represented by BCM Environmental and Landlaw P L L L C. Uh, this was for L. Deerwood Drive, what shade H, lot one fifty-three, that requested a variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three for minimum lot frontage, one hundred and five feet required, zero feet proposed to construct a single family home on a non-conforming lot of record in the R thirty zone, word one. Um, before we get started, there was, uh, one of the claims in the rehearing request was that there was insufficient notice. Would city staff, uh, care to comment?
Um, Mr. Chair, I can comment a little briefly.
Please do.
One other, there's only a few butters to this property. One of them is listed as the city of Nashua as the first owner. It had a co-owner of LCHIP, which is a agency that provides grants and funding for conservation easements and things like that. Um, we believe that we should have notified them, so therefore staff's recommendation that the board just grant a rehearing so that we can notify the LCHIP folks. And this can come back at a future date.
Thank you. Okay, given, uh, staff's recommendation, uh, Mr. Shaw, comment?
And just also, I think there was a question about, uh, in, in the notifications as well uh, regarding the Nashville Airport Authority. And I don't, I'm trying to remember if there was another. So I just, if that could be addressed, just so we know uh, what's the staff's opinion is for all of the, you know, so.
That, that in, and some of residents also. Mr. Falk?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although the airport is a large piece of property and it's very close to the subject property, we did not notify the airport because they are not really listed as a butter. The other, there's a few other homeowners' names that were mentioned. They are not butters and they were not notified. We will not notify the second or third or fourth house away. It's just the property owners. So we believe, and we believed at first, we did notify everybody properly. It was just the issue with the LCHIP that, uh, we believe that we should have notified them uh, as an agency that has provided, uh, grants to one of the conservation lots or one of the conservation properties that are butts this site, uh, they should have been notified. So, we believe it was an honest over, over omission. It's not a, it's a really unique situation here. But we feel the best thing to do is just for the board to grant a rehearing and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Other board members with, with comments? Well, what I'd like to do is, is, you know, since we, uh, we believe that, um, uh, for, there was a procedural error, um, that we simply go ahead and uh, grant the, vote to grant their rehearing request. Um, but, uh, I, so we, we need to take a vote on the, well, let's discuss the procedural error. Mr. Shaw, you have more comments?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think, uh, maybe there could be, I don't know if it should be part of the motion or just as at least pre-discussion. I, I would assume that we would uh, include all the previous, uh, testimony as well as having another public hearing as part of the rehearing request. Just, um, wanted to make sure that was understood.
Right, yes. Well, since we're granting the rehearing request, there will be another public hearing.
Thank you.
Or at least assuming we vote for the public rehearing request. Mr. Courier? You're, you're muted, Jack.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just to clarify, uh, if any of the four conditions we feel warrant a rehearing, that is enough for a rehearing request. I'm sure we're all aware of that. Was there any thought of discussing the other questions or just because we have a, w- we seem to have a yes on one question, a procedural error, we'll just hold it at that and move to a rehearing vote?
That was, that was my impression because I, I don't think this, you know, since we're generally in agreement that uh, the first item, uh, you know, the condition of this met, that, uh, we might as well just vote for a rehearing request. Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's, that's correct. All it takes is one of these four questions to be answered with a yes response in order for the rehearing to be granted. Uh, rehearing request to be granted, not the rehearing itself. So since there was a procedural issue and this will come back, it's not proper to answer any of the other questions because since the LCHIP folks are, uh, someone who would have gotten a notice, perhaps they would have had some testimony or information that we would have found the board would have found valuable in which to, uh, make a decision. So this whole thing will really start all over again. We have the entire application from the applicant. Uh, they will be notified and if they want to add anything to it, that's fine. So it'll be re-advertised and re-notified as if it was a new case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, other board members with, with comments? Oh, okay, um, let's see. I think the way I want to do this is to simply make a motion to grant their hearing request because the board believes that there was a uh, procedural error of improper notice. Um, and that city staff agrees with this. Um, that the, uh, LCHIP organization should have been notified, but was not. Um, and, you know, any other? And, you know, any other, uh, information can come up at the rehearing, uh, that will be, uh, scheduled at a future date. That, uh, I suppose will be up to the applicant to, to schedule. Is that right, Mr. Falk? We don't, we don't set that since the applicant's, I don't believe is here.
That's correct. Um, well, we're not going to just automatically put it on the next available agenda. We'll have to hear from the applicant, make sure that they're ready, that they have all of the information that they want to submit to us. So the very earliest it could get on possibly is the second meeting in June, but it may be a later, a later meeting than that.
Okay, very good. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the rehearing request uh, for the case from the April 13th, nineteen, uh, 2021, meeting for, uh, Vivian Adams owner, L. Deerwood Drive, sheet H, lot 153, requesting variance from land use code section 190 dash 16, table 16, three for minimum lot frontage, 105 feet requested, required, zero feet proposed to construct a single family home on a non-conforming lot of record on the R30 zone, word one. The board, uh, does find that there was a procedural error of improper notice, uh, as agreed to by staff. So do I have a second, Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Uh, any discussion of the motion? No. Uh, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the rehearing request.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mankara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Um, that's five to nothing. The rehearing request is granted. Uh, and Mr. Falk, the rest, you and Ms. Courier, the rest is up to you. Uh, let us know when, uh, this comes back again.
And speaking for staff, I mean, we apologize for, um, anything that was done, you know, to cause this. This is not something we try to do or intended to do. This is a very unique situation. The, uh, it's very, very rarely that we see a, a co-owner listed such as the LCHIP. And, um, you know, it is an honest oversight that we feel and, uh, we apologize. Now, we always try to do our jobs correctly and legally in the right way and anyway, so.
We all, we all do.
We appreciate it.
That's what this process is for.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, so that's it for the, the issues, uh, the meeting. Do we, I didn't see an agenda for the next meeting. Uh, Kate, do we have one? Oh, we do.
Right here.
Right there. Okay. So let's see what we got. We are looking for, uh, regional impact.
We have an accessory dwelling unit, uh, shed requests. Another shed request down here.
And another, a garage request.
Yeah. And.
Garage.
Garage with an accessory dwelling unit. We have use variance for a contractor's office and shop. And we have a request for a women's overnight homeless shelter.
Okay, um. So, uh, let's see. Mr. Boucher, do you see any, uh, any regional impact?
No, I do not.
Mr. Shaw, do you see any regional impact?
No, I do not.
Uh, Mr. Mankara, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
Mr. Courier, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
And I, Mr. Lionel, do not. Um, I didn't see minutes for the next meeting. We don't, do we have the minutes yet? No, okay, fine. So there's no minutes to review. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second one, Mr. Shaw. Thank you. Um, it's 8:15. And, uh, see you folks, uh, the next meeting.